Two P M. Thursday, January twenty third, twenty twenty five. I will call to order the special meeting for the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. Ask everyone to please stand for prayer and then pledge allegiance. Let us pray. My heavenly Father, we give you praise for the freedom that we exercise today. We pray that you give us wisdom, civility, and all that we do. We ask that you give us wisdom as we continue to do what we need to do as an airport. We pray for so many, Lord, that are suffering today in Los Angeles and that surrounding area. Pray especially for those first responders, military that are involved. Keep them safe, help them to control these fires. We pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I'll leave you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Coon, roll call, please.
Mr. Kirkman?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Dajin?
Here.
Ms. Saul?
Here.
And Mr. Ludwig had a previously scheduled trip that he couldn't attend, as well as General Lafferty and Mr. Burke.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Coon. Let the record show that we do have a quorum for our meeting today. Our first item of business here is public comment. Do you have any public comment cards?
I do not have any cards.
Does anyone from the public wish to make a comment during this open public comment time? Yes, sir. I'll need you to state your name and address. And Craig, would you get a card to make sure we get that filled out too for this gentleman?
Yeah. Whoever wants to make these just write.
What is your name, sir?
It's Clay Glenn. Yeah, Clay L. Glenn, Jr. I live in Keystone Heights, six zero nine three Milligan Road. I actually work at the airport.
Yes.
Been an employee for the past seven years of the firm and local who's lived here for over twenty years. And I've seen every member of our team go above and beyond for the surrounding communities and their citizens. And it's a goal of ours to support and grow local business and companies alongside us in partnership towards a stronger cumulative future for us all. As a local, I've seen firsthand positive effects we've had on not just the business side of things, but the people as well. We are a beacon of growth and goodwill, and all personal opinions of the firm that I've encountered have been nothing but stellar. Therefore, it's a great mystery to me and as well as a frustration to discover that we've been served this cease and desist letter with not much of a heads up. Safety, security, and compliance has always been a really big deal and held above all else by us at the firm and our team members. And any issue with complying with any kind of request or altering something, we've had no problem acting within like whatever boundaries and standards are needed. I feel like this matter could have been resolved professionally between the firm and the airport, little to no outside of walkman or objection, but it's since escalated in such a way that feels planned and targeted against us by the airport and its board. The methods and steps taken by them have been underhanded and dishonest and for their own personal self-interest, I feel, as well as demeaning to the efforts we pour our hearts into for years. And I feel like it's not an understatement compared to this a little bit to the likes of some crime going on here organized crime. The airport and its members knowingly chose their actions in course for their own gain without thoughts to us, the communities, or evening the FAA. So I feel like we should rescind this vote and cast a new vote that considers all things properly fairly.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
I'm Marina Heitz. So I didn't know we need to fill out a public comment card. We emailed our public comments.
I have those.
Okay. I understand we each have three minutes, so I just wanted to share that these are all the documents that I read because I want to let the board know that I spent a lot of time educating myself and researching all of the issues at hand. And that's really what I'm here for today is to hit a reset and have the firm, the FAA, and the board work collaboratively so that we can have communication about, here's the steps. This is over fourteen hundred pieces of documentation that I did a Freedom of Information Act request from the board so that I can understand what happened from having a wonderful relationship and not having anything but positive communication from the board to us exercising our lease renewal rights, turning into an appraiser, and then having an escalation to where we are today. I appreciated the airport manager sending the corrective action plan. I've educated myself, and now I understand that the airport board submitted a corrective action plan to the FAA for the three potential noncompliance issues. And that's the kind of information that I hope the board will provide. Hey, here are the steps. We have to do a corrective action plan. Then we have this much time. The FAA provides a response. Then we have this much time. And again, I want to publicly say, so I don't have to waste everybody's time with the Freedom of Information Act request, please include us in those correspondence and meetings so that we can be tracking and understand the next steps. The reason why I'm here today is because in December of twenty twenty four, I left the meeting with the understanding that we were going to work jointly and ask the FAA for reasonable time to correct some of the noncompliance issues. So I was very taken aback with the January vote to cease and desist. And when Craig forwarded these FAA documents, they do clarify that the only entrance for the public are tenants, as well as Cloudbuster, who's a tenant, and whoever else is a tenant, is through an RPZ. So my understanding is, is that the vote was made under the concern that the board had liability. But I just want to make sure that this educational piece that I've gotten, which I think is great news, the FAA makes allowances to go through an RPZ if it's considered an access road according to these documents. And we did our best guess. There's probably ten to twelve thousand cars that go in and out of an RPZ at the access gate. That's our only access as tenants to our lease. So in light of that, it seems to me that's way more risk than the ten or so cars that we have on track. We only have ten on track at a time. They're in the back section for a very short amount of time. And they, one driver has shared with me that they could outrun if they saw a plane getting into them. They could drive faster because they're not there very long. So in light of this new FAA information, that there's already an RPZ violation for our access, I would really like the board to consider making a motion to rescind that. Let's all work together with the FAA and respond to their recent corrective action response, which I understood. Thank you.
All right.
Can I make my comment?
Yes, sir. State your name, please, and I'll need you to fill out a card as well.
I did that, buddy. My name is Yoliza Reyes. I live in Miami, Florida. I've been an independent contractor for the firm for the past twelve years. I coach drivers for rally racing, and I also help train the military and police here. I also have some drivers who actually fly into the airport to take their lessons here. And all we've got from the firm is a great job they've been doing for these years. And everybody lives happy because everything is secure. They take care of everything, so there will be no risk for the people that were training there. Yeah, so this week that I came here, they told me that there is a possibility that it would be closed. So that caught me by surprise. I just wanted to let you know that we bring people here from all over the world, not just from America, also from Europe to train here, and these people bring business to the town and to the airport. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Greg Beatty. I have a small endurance racing team. We've been coming out to the firm since I've already, actually, I was out there before the track was even paved. We practice and test here, and then we travel all over the country racing. And so I don't know anything about the disputes or the history of all this. I'm just going to make an argument for why I think, you know, we should let the firm stay open. The FAA has a document, Airport Land Use Compatibility Circular. It's a PDF on the website. I read more of it than I wanted to. And it goes through a lot of permissible land uses around airports and in RPZs and that sort of stuff. And there's some things that are automatically permitted, like you mentioned, airport taxiways, that kind of stuff, farming irrigation. And then there's a long list of stuff where there could go either way. Golf courses, for example, and actually professional racing tracks are mentioned, which surprised me. So the FAA, it sounds like would at least consider this. You know, they have, in that document, they list their concerns, which are like visual obstruction, bird attractants, buildings, crowds, that kind of stuff. But none of that applies to the very north end of the racetrack, right? So it seems like there's a decent chance that the FAA will look at this and go, okay, this isn't an immediate danger, like we can take some time and work it out. And I did some Googling around for what happens when golf courses are in the RPZ, because this has happened a number of times, and it doesn't sound like they want the courses immediately. So I don't know exactly what the board's concern is here. If it's liability, if you're worried that a car hits, or a plane hits a car, I think pretty much everybody would, driving on the track, would probably be fine signing an extra waiver, you know, saying, we recognize there is a danger that a plane could hit us. As far as I know, there's never been an airplane that's encroached onto the track, has there? I've never heard of it. And as Marina mentioned, and I was telling her the other day, the very north end of the track where the plane, where the RPZ encroaches is turn five and six. And we're going fairly slowly through there, and we actually turn and look. Between turns five and six, we turn and look kind of down the runway. So there's a decent chance that if a plane was barreling towards us, right? Race cars are fairly mobile and agile. We can get out of the way. And, you know, like everyone else mentioned, you know, I'm not a pilot. My brother is. I'm not. But I would probably never visit Keystone if it wasn't for the firm. You know, we've run a lot of business to the town, I think, mostly in restaurants. And some, unfortunately, we had to buy some auto parts to fix our cars and that kind of stuff. But we've brought a lot of business to the town over the years, so if that calculates anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had Brent over here.
Have I started out feeling myself?
Yes, sir. We know you, Brent.
I know. You're not talking about for this stuff. You're going to be honest. Right. My role is with deep concern about the recent events. For twenty eight years, I have dedicated myself to foster a good, positive relationship with the firm. He say that? Good thing. When the board members previously asked me to advocate against the city involvement for matters concerning that the airport, we're going to have, the city were taking over some of your functions or list overlooked. I kind of went to bat for you, and I wrote that for you and spent time doing that, and that just dissolved for some reason, so I don't know why. At that point, I'm descending, I'm on your side. I want to be, you guys know the airport better than down the city. But then we get to this, which is a bit of a shock. So thoughts of my tenure, you know, I've gone way beyond the support, I think, for this airport. I built runway, I built some tables, runway, familiar lights for your tables, for your, for doing your pilot thing. I built a cabinet out there, basically all my own money and my own time because I want us to have a good relationship with the airport. I helped remove some of the NASA debris that was left over for tenants in pay's bills. So I helped clean that up with Marine. I've helped with ward management issues, but on the back of the runway where the wall runs off and it gets on the side of the runway, helped with that. You may not know that, but I was there doing it. I cleaned the trees at the back of the runway back there that were in the way, which was requested by before you guys got here, but I helped do all that. So now it's sort of devastating to read that the FAA labeled the firm as us being hostile. That's kind of hurtful. That's kind of, it's characterization, particularly galling, gives all the airport a thumb to us. It's not, not good. I don't feel good about that at all. The property we've been using since nineteen ninety nine has always been with what we've always understood, because mainly I've been here for twenty one years, so I've had two owners. We've always understood the lease line is where it was. We didn't know any different. We didn't make the rules. You guys made the rules. FAA made plates in the way, but we didn't make those rules. It came from you guys. And in that time, you know, we've had three new managers. We've had various board members. And, you know, you've rotated through. Why do you not like give one information to the next board member that turns up here? It's quite shocking that that. And you as pilots, you board members, some of you fly, you fly in and out of this airport. Have you not recognized there was a problem back there? How it turns up now? You guys are the ones that fly airplanes. You should know where the safety lands at, and no one told. And you haven't told us for twenty one years, or twenty, actually twenty six years.
Brent, your three minutes are up, but I'm going to give you another minute. All right? Your three minutes are up. I'm going to give you another minute.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
Well, you have this, so you know what it's like.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Raul Bentonport. I live at five two five Willow Lake Drive in the state of Augustine. I am the director of operations for ISA, which is the International Security Academy here at the firm. My sole job here is to train military law enforcement and other governmental agencies. Excuse me. We do this on a monthly basis. We bring in, you know, twenty, thirty teams at a time sometimes here. We are in charge of making sure that they learn everything to do with driving in hostile environments. Using the track is paramount. If we don't have part of that track at all, it limits our ability to actually train on the floor for one hour and a quarter, even for a local law enforcement. They use it fully. You have seen them. The cars running around, helicopters. It is vital for, not just for us to stay open, but also for the training that they need, you know? For us to cease using it is denying that ability for us to do that. Are there other training facilities? Yes. But we are the only ones to provide a track and operate for them that we do here. We have approximately already a hundred and twenty plus individuals signed up for this year alone. If we can't deliver just because, you know, part of the track approaches into the RPZ, I mean, it's, it's going to affect not just us negatively, but also the people that provide us services. That's basically all I have to say about that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name's Michael Youngs. I'm the shop manager over at the firm. I started there about five years ago. I moved here ten years ago, just solely to work at the firm. Once I got there, I started realizing that, I didn't realize everything that went into it. I thought it was just cool race cars like everybody else. They drive by, they see all the cool stuff happening. And I found out like Raoul was just touching on what we actually do on the military side and on the law enforcement side, and what we can give back and how we can actually use what we've developed as more of a passionate and a fun skill. And we can actually pass that along in a useful way so other people can actually survive in dangerous situations. And like Raoul said, that part of the track seems miniscule, but that is actually like, that makes the whole facility work. You can't turn back around and come back safely and control the traffic and do the, do the things that we do, the way we teach the people in order to complete the curriculum without that part of the track. Grant, with his race car team, if he goes out there and they don't have a track to drive on, if they don't have that way back through. So I guess what I'm asking for, what I'm hoping maybe we can help you guys understand is that if, having this short of a timeframe on coming to a solution, you know, whether, you know, it doesn't matter how we got here. In the grand scheme of things, we have an issue, we have to come across, we have to, we have to solve. We need to solve it together so everybody can live harmoniously. I'm just requesting more time for us to be able to come together on a solution and be able to make something work because we do have a lot at stake here. We have a lot of promises out and a lot of contracts out. And a lot of people we've already built business with over the years. And if we start cutting that off now, it's going to take us years to recover the small amount of time that we could lose. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Lance Williams, and I am the operations manager there at the firm. And I just want to speak on how vital that a cease and desist order is for the operations there at the firm. As you guys have already heard so many others in this room speak on the scale and the spectrum that is required in a day in and day out process with operating a facility such as the firm. Just a little bit of background on myself is that I have managed to work at some other racetracks, not just in Florida, but also in the southern part of Louisiana and New Orleans, where that's all it is, is just a racetrack, right? But the firm is a little bit more than that. The firm is a motorsport training facility. First is what I like to tell people. That's, that's just what we are. And it's not just for the motorsport industry. It's also for military. It's also for law enforcement. It's for those people that help us on a day to day in our lives that we benefit. We all benefit from. It's a win-win situation, right? We all benefit from teaching those individuals how to perfect their skills to make it safer on the roads that we all travel on. I don't think that it is probably the right decision to order a cease and desist when we have this type of operation going on, when really it's the only operation probably in the country that is able to offer the types of training that we do on all spectrums of anything related to anything that has an engine in wheels. So I just ask that you all take that into consideration that, you know, it's not just the firm at this point. It's everyone around this table and everyone that's in this room, the community, our neighbors, our children, our families. It's everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments from anybody here in the room?
Anything I can really add to that? My name's Aiden True. I work here at the track as well. Been here for about five months. And the more that I find out, the more I realize it really is more than just the community as well. It is the entire nation that we try to support and values that we try to add to everybody as well. And I believe that taking that away without trying to explore other options would be a great detriment to everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have my comment card filled out. My name is Matt Heitz. I live at five oh two Northeast Eighth Avenue in Gainesville, Florida. I am a community member and interested party. I am the director of a trade school located in Los Angeles, California. We were evacuated three times, and so our board had the opportunity to look at, how do you respond to an emergency situation? And so based on that and based on the fact that I'm married to Marina and interested party, I just wanted to share a perspective. I'm an economist, so I tend to break things down kind of systematically. So I'm, the way that we looked at response to an unexpected emergency was by first evaluating the stakeholders. So when I look at the situation that we presented with here, I can identify five different groups of stakeholders that you have the difficult challenge of really trying to satisfy all these stakeholders simultaneously. So I think it's going to be read into the record later, you know, we have the local economy. Hey, we have a lot of feedback from community business owners, and it demonstrates the significant impact that the firm has on the local economy. I believe there was an economic report that says the firm drives several million dollars worth of economic activity on an annual basis. So obviously, we want to do what we can to satisfy that stakeholder by continuing to have that economic magnet in our community. And I think we're going to see that a lot of them have taken the time to show up and to write and have really demonstrated, you know, their, their interest in this. So they're an active stakeholder. We have first responders and active military personnel. It is not an oversimplification to say that the firm saves lives, period. And as a result, these people work with the firm to better fulfill their essential service and increase the safety of the, you know, individuals that have to carry out these missions, critical work that could be interrupted if the cease and desist continues. Third, obviously, we have the firm. Since acquiring the current ownership group, since acquiring the business thirteen, well, at least over ten years ago, this team worked to create a sustainable business. It looks glamorous, but all over the country, we have racetracks sort of closing because of the difficult financial economics of operating a racetrack. Yes, this team has done it, and they've done it while being a good community partner and really partnering with local businesses, with the airport, et cetera. And I think that's to be applauded. And again, it could be, you know, challenged if the cease and desist is to persist. We have the interested party of the FAA. Upon receiving the corrective action plan, I was greatly encouraged. As Marina pointed out, they have laid out a framework where they will allow exceptions. They allow it with the entry. They have identified different grant resources. And over and over and over again, the corrective action plan speaks of a measured response that as long as the board and the tenant will collaborate and move towards a resolution, the FAA is willing to take time and to see that resolution through, right? Over and over, it says, do not harm. They're not looking to harm the community and harm all of the different stakeholders, okay? And then that brings us to number five. A stakeholder is the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. And I truly appreciate the difficult time, the challenge that's in front of you because of all of these interested parties and, you know, you know, the authority and the individuals who provide the authority. Obviously, you have a fiduciary responsibility and a duty of care to the community, to the FAA, to the nearest tenants. And I think in trying to serve these various constituencies, at times you've made decisions with incomplete information. And this information keeps coming, and we're all learning about the process and learning about the FAA guidelines. And as this information has come to light, I think the one thing that's become clear is that previous boards have made errors, and now you are tasked with clearing up those errors in the best way possible. Again, as a community member, as an interested party, I'm concerned that this cease and desist, the current trajectory, sets everybody on a path towards litigation. And litigation destroys economic value, period. Nobody's going to wind up happy. It's lengthy. It's going to harm the board. It's going to harm the firm, the local businesses, the first responders, and the active military. So what I would recommend and strongly support is a collaborative process as outlined in the FAA corrective action plan that can lead to an amicable global resolution. That's what stands before us today. I believe that such a process will provide a path forward that allows the board to honor their responsibilities, allows the firm to continue to provide their valuable services and contribute to the local economy, and bring peace of mind to all parties in the form of clearly outlining expectations and requirements. And everybody can provide mutual releases so that we can all sleep at night and leave the prospect of destructive litigation behind us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more to read. This one's for, if it's okay. My other technician in the shop, he has to stay there because we have a class going on currently right now. So I would like to request that it be okay if I read the staple.
I'll allow it. Just fill out a card, you know, with his information on it so we can have it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Right.
So Hugo Traboa is, he's a resident in Gainesville. I don't know his exact address, but he's down there. But he, he works here in the shop. He's been here for, for about six months now. And he actually used to be retired, or was retired, came back because of us. So this is what he, he has to say. I'm reaching out with the concerns regarding the cease and desist order placed against my. my place of employment firm. I have been a proud resident of Gainesville for over 50 years. My career began at Hugo's Auto Service where I worked alongside of my father for 34 years before taking over his business and running it for another 16. I sold the business in 2023. In addition, as, in addition, I served as a former staff sergeant in the Air Force specializing in jet engines. After retiring, I chose to work at the firm because of the vital services we provide to the military and the law enforcement personnel. Our work not only supports these important sectors, but also benefits our country as a whole. It has a positive impact on our local community as well, attracting visitors and driving revenue to local businesses. It's my understanding that the track was built before the firm leased property. I'm puzzled to why the RPZ zone is now being raised and raised as the lease is being renewed. Why was this not addressed earlier? Any point of concern is the recent property appraisal, which seems to be to overlook the fact that the parts of the land are unusable due to swampy terrain. How can entire property be appraised at one value when certain sections cannot be utilized? After reviewing the video from the March 2024 meeting, it appears that proper due diligence has not been exercised by the board in discussion, discussing these matters with the firm or in organizing a workshop to collaboratively find a solution that works for all parties. In conclusion, I believe the cease and desist order is premature as these are still unresolved issues that have not been fairly addressed by all parties. Sincerely, Hugo Traboga." Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I've already given you time for a public comment. I've already given you time for a public comment. Thank you. Any other public comments? From anyone in the room? All right. I'm going to read names of some emails that we had received with public comments. I have a email and public comment that was received from Mr. Lance Williams. Mr. Friar, did you read this email?
I did.
Ms. Hall, did you read the email? Mr. Dodg, did you read it? I too read the email. We also have a email and a comment from Southeast Adventure Vehicle Expo from Elisa Vinovsky. Mr. Friar, did you read that email?
I did read that email.
Mr. Dodg, did you read the email?
I did.
I read the email. We received an email from Mr. Ken Kirkpatrick. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did. I believe that's the one from Sonny's Barbecue or some preference.
Yes, he's the manager.
Yes.
With I, sir. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
And I too read the email and public comment. We received an email and public comment from Conquer Custom. From Patrick Loughlin. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment and email?
I did read that email.
Ms. Hall, did you read the email?
Yes.
And public comment? Mr. Dodg? We have another public comment from Deborah Bittner. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment?
I did.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
And I too read the public comment from Deborah Bittner. Have an email and public comment from Mr. Michael Youngs. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did, and I listened to his statement here in the meeting.
All right. Ms. Hall? Mr. Dodg?
I did.
And I too read the email and public comment. Have an email from Ms. Lorena Heinz. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did.
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? Ms. Hall? And I too read that. I have a email and public comment from Mr. Amanda Skelly. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
That was Miss Amanda Skelly, I believe.
Did I say mister? Sorry.
Yeah, I think you did. Yes, I did read that one.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
All right. Have an email and a public comment from David Walters. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did, and I listened to his comments in this meeting as well.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
And I too read the email and public comment. Have an email and public comment from Dave Stoltz. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did.
Ms. Hall, did you read the email and comment?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? And I too read the public comment and email. Raoul B. Bettencourt, he spoke earlier. We also received his public comment. Mr. Friar, did you read and, did you read his public comment?
I did, and I listened to his comments in this meeting.
All right. Ms. Hall?
I'm verifying. I just want to be sure because I have a list that I went through. Let me see.
While she's looking, Mr. Dodg?
I did.
All right. I too read this public comment.
If that one was part of what you sent out, then I did. I've read all the ones that were sent.
Okay. That's part of what was sent out. Mr. Coon sent out to all the board members. Have another email and public comment from Nathan@PolarisofGainesville. Mr. Friar, did you read this email and public comment?
I did.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
And I too read that email and public comment. Have another email from Anna Maria Dabu. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment?
I did.
Ms. Hall?
I did.
Mr. Dodg? I too read the public comment that was submitted. Have a public comment from Ray Tremblay. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment?
I did read that.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg?
I did.
I too read the public comment. Gentleman read for him, Mr. Hugo Traboga. Hopefully I didn't butcher the last name too badly. I apologize if I did. Mr. Friar, did you read his public comment?
I did, and I believe that's the one Michael just read from the shop.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? I too read that. Have a public comment from Zachary Stat. Mr. Friar, did you read this?
I did.
Public comment?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? I too read that public comment. Have a public comment from Dave Stoltz. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment?
I did, and I think you just mentioned his name earlier.
Yeah.
So that must be a duplication or he sent a second email. But I did read the comments. So some came directly to our, to my inbox or my mail from these individuals and sent them to the airport manager who forwarded them. So that may explain the duplication.
There was at least two that I remember were duplicate.
All right. So just to confirm, we have read the public comment from Dave Stoltz?
Yes.
All right. Have a public comment from Mr. Mitchell Gunter. Did you read his public comment?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Mr. Dodg? I too read that comment. We have a public comment from, or an email from Mr. Hayden True. Did you have an opportunity to read that?
I did.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? I too read that. We have a letter from Firepower from Mr. William Beck. Mr. Friar, did you read this?
I did, and I believe it was signed by him and his wife.
Correct. Ms. Carol? You read that? Mr. Dodg? I too read the letter. We have it as a record. Timothy Vinovsky also provided a public record. Mr. Friar, did you have, have you read this public comment?
I did read that public comment, yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? I too read that public comment. We have, this just says Clay@Gorally.com. He says he's an employee. Are you, Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment?
I did, and I listened to his comments. He was the young man standing right over here. I think he's the first one to speak.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? I too read that. The last one that I have is from Justin Walters. Mr. Friar, did you read this public comment from Mr. Walters?
Yes, I did read that.
All right. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Dodg? All right. I too read that. For the record, digital and hard copies of each of these emails and public comments will be included with the minutes of this special meeting that we're having today. All right. Moving on to our agenda. First item on our agenda is for Mr. Taylor. Has a report on status of firm compliance with cease and desist letter regarding track usage within the RPZ. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. My report will be brief, but of course, I'm happy to answer or try to answer any questions. I was asked to report on, as Mr. Kirkland indicated, the status of firms' compliance with the cease and desist direction that the board approved at its January 7 meeting. On behalf of the airport and as the board in that meeting requested me to do, on January 10, I did send the cease and desist letter to firm. I directed it to Ms. Heitz as the, as firm's listed president and registered agent for service. Got the address given for the registered agent on the SunBiz website, SunBiz listing for firm. And I also emailed copies to Ms. Heitz at her email address and to Mr. Chris Corcoran at his email address, Mr. Corcoran being, I believe, the chief portfolio manager for the strategic group, but he's been involved in this on behalf of firm. So that went out on January 10. Based on reports that I've received from airport personnel, based on their observations, firm since January 10, and notwithstanding the cease and desist direction, has continued to use the portion of that racetrack that intrudes into the RPZ for runway 1129, which is the specific segment of the track that was the subject of the cease and desist. That's the status of compliance, which is, through appearances, there has been non-compliance. I will also say, one other thing that has occurred in the meantime is that two days ago, the airport received from Katura Clark, an FAA official in the FAA Atlanta office, an email which essentially followed up on a conference call that FAA had with airport's appraiser, Mr. Albright. And I believe Mr. Prang and Kirkland and Coon were also part of that telephone conference. In that email, which I believe a copy was also sent to Ms. Heitz, Ms. Clark addresses a number of issues which the airport and firm are going to have to address, but for purposes of the cease and desist direction specifically, which is our agenda item for today, its relevance to me was that Ms. Clark made clear that before any other issues can be addressed with FAA, the, as Ms. Clark referred to it, safety and hazard issue with respect to the intrusion of the track into the RPZ has to be addressed first. That is, FAA has told us, as I read this, that FAA has other issues that have to be addressed, but they're not going to even look at those until we address the safety and hazard issue first. So if that's where things stand, assuming the board in this meeting takes this issue up in its consideration of what, if anything, to do about the status, if the board wishes me the recommendation, I'm prepared to do so. That's my report.
Second sense of the board, want to hear Mr. Taylor's recommendation?
Sure.
All right?
Yes.
There may be options for the board may choose to do in this situation. And I try very carefully to consider what those options might be. And my recommendation would be that the action the board takes, and I do recommend that the board take some action, that the action the board takes as a next step to seek to obtain compliance with its previous cease and desist direction would be to direct another cease and desist letter to firm to try to make it clearer, if possible, that the cease and desist direction means to cease and desist from using any part of that track that intrudes into the RPZ. It doesn't affect any part of the racetrack other than that which intrudes into the RPZ. That is the safety issue and that is the hazard. And a board, firm, another opportunity to comply. And if they don't comply then, then the board will need to discuss what to do then. But that's my recommendation. And I, I think, I hope that will be seen as the airport trying to pave the way for firm to comply with that which I think we all must comply, which is eliminating a safety hazard at Peterport. And that will put us in a position to try to make some headway with FAA on the other issues that have to be addressed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
So I'd like to comment on that. So I think I read the same email from Katura. Her last name's Clark, is that correct?
Yeah, it's this one.
And it does state...
Mr. Friar, I have some copies of that if anyone would like to see that as well. We have extra copies here.
The email from the FAA. She is stating in that that we must eliminate that hazard before we do anything else. Is that not correct?
Right.
Mr. Friar, that's the way I read it.
And so do I.
And that's the way I under... I was not part of the conference call that occurred last week today, I believe, but I've heard reports from the others from the airport who did participate in it, Mr. Kirkland, Mr. Coon, and also Mr. Prang. And this email is consistent with what they reported to me of being part of their takeaway that phone call.
The way I read this, this is from Katura Clark, airport compliance specialist. And she's with the regional, south, south region or southern region.
Compliance office, right.
So the actions we have taken, and I hear this word, and, and I did read with, with empathy, all the emails that have come in. We've bombarded with them. I think there was like 25 or, you know, I haven't counted, but I think this gentleman over here mentioned, and I hate to point at you, that you weren't aware of everything that was going on, but there's been some insinuation that this was done retaliatory, without thought, without merit, and it is not. It was done with great thought and great empathy. We realize the impact this is having on the firm. But one thing that I've gotten out of all these emails is it seems like at least the parties involved, and they do have skin in the game, there's no doubt about that. Some of them are local businesses, some of them are businesses that come in seasonally or periodically. But it seems like they're slanting, is this is a racetrack first and an airport second. And it is in fact not that. It's an airport first and there happens to be a racetrack on it. And when I hear this word collaboration, and then I hear all the accusatory... And when I hear this word collaboration, and then I hear all the accusatory, the finger pointing that the airport board has never supported the firm, we've been against them, those are facts that are not true. We've donated materials for the Jeep, calling thing, the, the culverts, we have helped, we helped out greatly when the Nitro Cross came in here, they needed dump trucks to move material, I helped. That contractor acquired dump trucks, we got a firm, a local firm that provided the clay, which was earthworks. We've done many things over the years. And I go back to the same thing I said before. Everybody seems to think that this board sitting here right now knew about this all along, and we did not. And I am a pilot, and I fly over that RPZ. There are not magical lines that are just drawn out there, they're not painted. We just had to have the surveyor put lines so we could see where it was at. But I'd ask anybody sitting here, who was here when that was done, has it ever occurred to anybody that Ivor, and I'm sorry, his last name escapes me.
We can.
Okay? That he did this without permission or got his lines mixed up? Everybody wants to point to this board as being cruel and unfair, but that is without merit. We do have compassion, we know you do things, but we also know Rockland does things with NATO partners all around the world. They've got 30 employees over there, you've got five employees over there, you're just as important with five to me as you, as they are with 30. But they're doing things too. Are we willing to jeopardize their operation that they do, that they, their patriotism and the things they do to support our armed forces without working through this together? And we've got to work together. I understand it hurts. And I said before in the last meeting, I knew that people had moved here, and they, they bought homes here, and they've got their kids going to school here.
I have a million dollars invested in this town, in this town, for myself, and you're going to take all of that away.
No, no, we're not trying to do away with the track. I've not heard one person on this board say we're trying to do away with that track. We're trying to get in compliance with the FAA. And if we're not, well, I can't speak to the rest of the board, and the whole board's not here. But I personally cannot vote for anything to continue that's going to subject this airport, this authority, your company, or the city of Keystone Heights to liability. And you mentioned if you saw an airplane coming, you could swerve out of the way. It's not just about that, it's about the cars swerving out on the runway. Cars have lost control. Well, let me speak, please, we let y'all do all your comments. We hire this man who has been representing this board for as long as I've been on the board, for his expertise in law, liability, danger, anything that may affect us, and look out for the best interest for the overall governance of this airport. And we have to do that. And I hate that these barriers are being driven up between us. This young man Clay here said we were even organized crime. I couldn't believe that, but I'm just going to let that go. He's young, he's upset, he's compassionate, he loves the company he works for, and I think that's great. But before we start name-calling and saying all these things that are not true, we're not organized crime. We're trying to do what is right and get through this and get back on track as quickly as we possibly can. And it seems to me the only way that's going to occur is if y'all stop. Please stop using that end of the track. This business about the road going across that RPZ, that road is right at the tree line, a plane could not hit that unless it came over and went vertically into the road. That's a far stretch there. And it has some distance, it has a greater distance from that runway. That RPZ goes out a certain distance. And you could be jeopardizing your own egress into the thing if we keep harping on that too, that's dangerous. We need to work together, we need to quit name-calling and giving false narratives. Let's get the truth out there. It's right here in this letter. This lady, Ms. Clark, is telling us we need to stop that so we can get on track and figure out how to move on from here. And there's going to be some pain. If, if there comes up another way through further conversations between Mr. Coon, our chairman, our engineer, if there's other methods that can be done to mitigate this in the meantime, we can look at that. But right now, this is what we're given, and we're just as much in a mystery at times when we're getting feedback from the FAA, because they are a huge federal bureaucracy. And we're just a little tiny ant on this hill with them. There's much more major airports that they deal with. So I'm just saying, if you really want to collaborate, we've got to get compliance over there, because it's only going to get worse. And we may end up in litigation, and I don't think that's going to benefit your party
We don't want that.
or ours. Nobody wants that. We want to get this fixed.
Well, the thing is, I mean, just say, let me just say quickly-
Wait a minute, we're-
I'll finish, I'm finished.
Okay, we're, we're getting off track. I want to go back to Mr. Taylor's recommendation. He made a recommendation to the board.
I make a motion that we accept Mr. Taylor's recommendation and reaffirm the cease and desist letter as it was written.
Yes, sir. No, sir. No, sir. Thank you. I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to say quickly, yes, you are right, Scott. This is an airport first and above all, and our first duty as members of this airport authority board is to maintain this airport and follow all FAA regulations to promote the aviation activity on this airport. That's our first duty.
All right.
I'd like to say something, but it's not directly related to this vote, but one thing that I keep hearing is that, you know, we don't understand why this is happening. You know, this came out of the blue, we're not sure what prompted this or whatever, but tell me if I'm right. So if you look at number two on her letter, it basically says that every 20 years, the property, surplus property is reappraised to ensure CPI increases remain commensurate with FMB, with, which is future market value. Is that basically, am I correct in thinking that that is what has prompted some of this? Is a reevaluation, that 20-year reevaluation? Is that-
Of a non-air nautical lease.
Right, is that correct?
It's, it's with the question about the renewal of the existing lease and the involvement that we have now with the FAA that has spelled out the safety issues as well as the fair market value issue. So that's why we are, that's why we're here.
So that's what, that's what, that has been a major prompt to how all this came about. So I don't know if y'all had heard that, knew that, why it might have cropped up, but
But it just-
That's kind of been my understanding, is that that's what happened.
That's where we got caught.
It's an FAA review procedure. FAA reviews procedure.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Mr. Taylor, you have your-
Motion.
Motion works.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item two on our agenda is dealing with full-time employee healthcare options. And Mr. Coon had provided to us with Mr. Dojene's assistance, some research that they have done and have information, and I'm going to ask that Mr. Coon and Mr. Dojene take this conversation from there and share with the board what you've found, what you, what your recommendations are, and let's have that discussion.
Okay, very good. So if you have the information that we had shared, first of all, I'd just like to say as, as Mr. Coon and I have kind of talked about this, looking at this issue, the one thing we thought about is what does other airports in the state do? So I found the listing of all airports in the state, which I had shared with everybody, who are listed on the special, Florida Special District list. Now, it doesn't indicate which ones are independent or dependent, they're just all on the special district list, 18 different airports. And I called several of them, who are the smaller airports. I didn't call Orlando or Jacksonville, because they're not really in the same realm as we are. But Quincy Gadsden, the airport manager, 70 years old, so he just uses Medicare, I found. Tri-County Airport, that individual's a retired veteran, so he has his own healthcare. They don't, and he's the only full-time employee. So every airport is doing something a little bit different. And Bartow Municipal Airport, it was interesting, he said they use the public risk management group health trust. And Craig actually spoke with him and got some additional information, right?
Yeah, I think I put that in the second page.
He did. And, but what I'd like to do right now, on the second page, I talked to an individual who's an insurance broker in the Tampa area. And so he has set some time aside to talk to us on the phone and share directly- Do I got it down one? I got it down one, right?
Okay.
Just here.
Mr. Dojene, before you call him, let's, let's just go through what he's presented to us.
Oh, sure.
And then find out if the board has some other questions or might have questions.
What he submitted to us for consideration, he sent us three different policies he had obtained. So United Care had two different policies, and then one by Blue Cross Blue Shield. The main difference between the two is that the United Healthcare Choice, well, let me just say, the lower rate from United Healthcare was an insurance policy that does not include surgical. The other one with the rate of 618 there in the first employee information does include surgical benefits. Blue Cross Blue Shield is much higher. But that's an HMO versus a PPO type policy.
And in most cases, the HMO, what is limited providers?
Very limited, very limited. So that wouldn't be very attractive at all.
Higher and limited.
Right, right. And you can see the angle deductible for the center column is 5,000, which is kind of what I've seen in policies over the recent years that I've had to deal with.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Van Zandt to comment, because I know the city just went through a whole process of reevaluating their medical coverages as well, so any input, comment here about that?
So what I offered or requested, just a legal, well, let me step back a second program. We have an insurance broker, it is the Bailey Group. For them to serve the city or anybody else in a group, they have to have at least five people. The city has exactly five people that use their health insurance. I've got Rock Care for Life and VA, and so I don't use that. I can tell you that it's all age. I saw some of yours was age and gender. Ours is strictly age, so I have two employees that use it that were born in 1970, as I was, 1300.
So these quotes that he provided are based on age, gender, and location?
When I had the school board, we could never participate with the cops and the firefighters because of the whole gender thing. They had you males, and we did not. We cost more. So what we could do, if it is legal, and I floated this idea, and let me just be really super explicitly clear, I'm happy to have an airport authority that manages and hires an airport manager, and that is our form of government. I'm not suggesting we go back and merge the airport with the city paying all their bills. However, comma, if the airport employees, how many ever of them, would be full-time and qualified for coverage, were to be on the city's, the Bailey Group requires they be on our payroll. So we use a payroll system called paychecks. If the airport wanted to push money, whatever you pay your people, whatever it would cost to add them to our plan, to the city, that whatever that lump sum is annually, then we could just pay them every two weeks like we pay our people and add them to our Blue Cross Blue Shield group. But in that paycheck system, or any payroll system we're using, there are a couple IRS documents, so the Bailey Group audits third customers, IRS audits the Bailey Group and any other providers, my layman's understanding of all this. So that, that would be a mechanism that I would be happy to take before the city council. If you guys wanted to do that, in a strictly, we're just trying to attract people for business, we, same with our centennial thing, the city council voted to give a lump sum to the Friends of Keystone, which is a nonprofit, because a rising tide lifts all ships. We can help the airport, which we've evidently owned since the 1940s, was deeded by the Department of Defense, we're, we're happy to continue doing that.
Now, that's interesting, because Lake Wales Airport Authority, I spoke with someone there at the airport, and they indicated that the airport employees receive benefits directly under the city of Lake Wales. Now, I didn't get any detail from them yet. Did, did you get any detail?
I've tried as recently as one third.
So if, if the city council, had the majority, felt generous and wanted to provide healthcare coverage, and you guys are willing to do a payroll slot, and they were willing to pay the medical whatever cost, that, that's a little bit different discussion. But, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take anything and run it up the flagpole that makes good sense. And it doesn't break any laws.
Okay, yeah, how about the legal side?
I've got no legal issue with this, and I'm all for airport employees enjoying health insurance, but it's really more an issue for Mr. Commando, looking at it on the city's behalf, because I'm just looking at it on the airport's behalf. And I look back at the ordinances that have been enacted by the city over the course of years concerning the nature of the airport's relationship to the city. And it's interesting, actually, the original ordinance that established the Keystone Airport Authority, which goes back to 1991, in one section, section seven, stated, "Employees of the authority shall be deemed to be employees of the city to the same extent as all other employees of the city and entitled to all the privileges and benefits thereof." In 2010, however, and I don't know what motivated this, because the resolution enacting the ordinance doesn't address it, but in ordinance 2010-494, the city council receded from that aspect of the initial ordinance and said, whereas Keystone Airport Authority is an entirely separate legal entity from the city, and the city is not responsible financially or otherwise of employees of the KAA, based on that, they repealed that section seven from the enabling legislation back in 1991. And I know from conversations with Mr. Commando that go back to the pipeline litigation, when there were claims being made against the airport by pipeline contractors, remarkably enough, that the city was resolute in its stance that it didn't have any responsibility for what the airport people did. So based on all of that, I really think, and you may already have done this, I really think you should solicit whether Mr. Commando has any concerns. I hope he doesn't, because then we can, it sounds like we might be able to get help from the airport, but I think it's a city issue.
Well, I have solicited that, I haven't received his feedback on that question, so I'll pursue him tomorrow, Tuesdays and Thursdays and bad government days, he represents several cities and counties, so it's harder to reach.
I just want to be on record, I'm not the one preventing this from happening.
It would be interesting if we could get some feedback from, from Lake Wales Airport, how they are doing.
And it sounds like some merging of that ordinance from 1991 and 2010 that may require a little revision, but I just want to stress, the city is not looking to have authority over the day-to-day, year-to-year operations, but we are in compliance, we're the deed holder.
Right.
When you pass your budget, I have to get it into our budget for advertising, so I have to budget. But our operational budget, the airport's operational budget, our community redevelopment authority budget, and our cemetery budget, which is also a piece of land the city owns- land the city owns, lives in two different counties, just like the airport. So we have some fiduciary connection, and if I was smarter, I could tell you more, but I'll get with our attorney and get back with you guys.
And if I may just add one more thing to that, to give a little bit of a picture of the legal landscape, so this falls under the common law of master and servant. And it's important because if one is considered a servant of a master, then the master is vicariously liable for most anything the servant may do that messes stuff up. So that's the critical issue. And Florida follows the old common law rule that says, well, you look to a multitude of factors, like the 21 factors that have been identified, to determine who is this employee's employer. And who pays the employee is one of those factors. But of course, they've also made clear that among all the various factors, that's probably the least important. I'm sure Mr. Commando knows all of this. So that the airport employees are on the city's payroll and therefore the city is the one who pays them may be a factor to evaluate in deciding, well, who is vicariously liable for this employee's conduct when the employee messes up somehow? That's just one factor, it's not likely to be the deciding factor. And I, I would imagine it will be true that all the other factors would suggest, well, this is the airport's ability.
All right. So given this information, you know, that we've just discussed, do we wanna just table this until we find out more of, is that a possibility to maybe collaborate with the city and, and get health coverage through them?
Well, we may not wanna make any decision on health insurance at this moment, but would you folks be interested? Now, this individual said he's still available to speak to us and educate us about health insurance from a broker's perspective.
I, I don't think-
It may be premature.
I think, I think so too. Let's, let's find out exactly what could happen maybe through the city-
Okay.
And then come back and visit it. That's just my, that's my personal opinion, but the board's gotta make a decision about whether you wanna table this until we get some more information from the city or not.
I did have one question, it was just basic curiosity, because, but is this, is this full cost of the insurance, or is this, would this be just the employer portion of the insurance?
What these quotes this fellow submitted is the full cost for these particular policies based upon age, gender and location.
So, so is part of what you're trying to do though, that there would be some contribution by the employees too in order to get this insurance?
Well, we really hadn't got there. I don't think we've got-
Yeah, there's still a lot.
That's a possible way to do it.
I was just being curious.
Right.
That's all.
I know, well, I won't go there because of just time and-
I just figured that's something down the line that's probably gonna have to be discussed.
Well, we started in the beginning where I worked at, the company paid it all, and as it got more and more, the company said, there's gotta be some concession from the employee, and so we said, yeah. One thing I might mention too, Charlie and Jim, is what about workman's comp? Is that gonna be an issue?
We pay that already through a separate policy.
Already paid.
I was gonna say that would be important.
So that's paid separately, that would stay with us if they do payroll?
And that's through payroll.
Well, that's what I'm saying, usually comes out on payroll.
Is that through FMIT?
I don't know, but I'm just saying that that would be another question is-
We already pay that through FMIT already.
But will we be paying it separately, or would they be paying it and we just paying it to pay it?
If it gets transferred to the city.
I think it would depend on, is yours, is yours under FMIT?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it could be combined.
Probably casually and-
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, as long as you're doing the ask.
So-
I might include that in the debate.
Would this, would this be possible, the airport sends those funds to the city and then the city makes out the payroll check?
Well, I think that's what he's gotta sort out is what does, what does that look like?
Anybody in our group has to be on our payroll.
Right.
That was made clear to me. If I had a full-time cemetery guy, it would kind of, that would be the only other thing I could think of, where the city owns some land but doesn't necessarily run the day-to-day operations. I mean, I thought you guys were very gracious when Mr. Coon was hired, allowing the previous city manager and mayor to sit on the hiring authority. You didn't have to do that. You have 100% control.
We appreciate your input.
So, all right.
All right.
We're gonna table it then.
So we need to make a motion or any up to that?
No, we can just table it and it can be on February agenda or as soon as-
Or set up another workshop.
Mr. Van Zandt finds out.
Special meeting or whatever.
Once we get that information, then I think it's probably good to get back together and, and then sort out-
Address that specifically.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. We have completed our agenda. We will consider ourselves adjourned at 3:15. Thank you, Deputy Austin. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your service. All but you and your colleagues too, thank you.
Thank you, sir.